All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your patience here. Having some technical difficulties on site, but we are ready to go. Uh, the time is seven oh six. I'm gonna call the Fixburg Planning Commission and DDA meeting to order here at seven oh six. And I will ask Secretary DeBolt to do roll call, please.
Schenkel.
Present.
Mutcha. Manchester.
Present.
Holmes. Cox.
Present.
Newman. Wartella.
Here.
DeLong.
Present.
DeBolt, yes.
Thank you. And I trust everyone's had time to review our agenda for this evening and uh, I will call for a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Member Wartella. I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion by Wartella.
My second.
Support by DeLong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And uh, next item is our citizen comments. This is our time where if we do have anyone either present physically or on our Zoom meeting, uh, can share comments. You have four minutes. Jim, do we have anybody online? I can't.
We do not on Zoom. Um, and we have two on YouTube. On YouTube, they can't make comments, so they're directed to Zoom, so we don't have anyone electronically.
All right. We will move on then. Uh, everyone was provided um, minutes from February. And uh, I trust everyone's had time to review those. And if there's any suggestions for edits, we'll take those. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Chair Schenkel, I appreciate Member DeBol's efforts in creating the minutes. However, I would make a motion that we table these until they can be reviewed again for grammatical and spelling errors. Again, thank you, Member DeBol, for doing these. It means others don't have to, but I would make a motion that we table these until April.
All right. We have a motion on the table, or on the table to table the approval of the minutes from February until uh, grammar has been updated. Do we have support for that? I'll support that. Support by Schenkel. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And next is Village Manager Report.
Yeah, I just wanted to update you on uh, some activities in the village, especially the projects that are going down. The uh, infrastructure project has commenced and started at Michigan and Washington. Uh, then we're into our second week. It's uh, we're looking at about seven weeks total um, that that project will take. Hopefully, that intersection here in the next ten days uh, is reopened. Uh, but about uh, the end of April, first week of May, that project should all be complete. And then we'll just be at punch ticket item list to ensure that curb lawns and et cetera um, are done. As a part of that, just a uh, couple things. By the end of April, we should have all the downtown trees planted. And anywhere you see a grate downtown, a tree will be in that grate minus one, which is on Prairie Street. Um, and that's due to the width of the sidewalk there. Uh, but the trees will be in. Uh, the downtown will be striped appropriately at the appropriate angles. Uh, I appreciate the public's patience. As some of the parking, uh, people do their best, but without the lines on the road, uh, get a little bit varied, but you'll see uh, the striping go in. And I think Main Street will become a lot more defined between uh, Prairie and in Washington especially. Uh, remind everyone that the downtown was designed to reduce speeds uh, in the Prairie Main Street area to twenty miles an hour naturally. I've heard some comments, uh, and it's by only a few people. Overwhelming majority of people in my professional life are very positive about the downtown. But that striping should be done by April. Um, as well as the benches, trash and receptacle will will be in. We have eight tables that are designed. So they're round tables. Six of them have six seats that are attached, similar to the ones that are located in Liberty Lane. Um, we've uh, those are coming from a local uh, lane, uh, business in Kalamazoo. Uh, just received word today that we should have those uh, by the first week of May. Um, so there'll be three tables at the bump out in front of the hideaway. Three tables in front of Liberty Lane East and two tables on Liberty Lane West. With one of the tables on Main and one on Prairie Street being ADA compliant, so they'll only have five chairs versus the six. Uh, we're, and then um, I'm gonna pause there. If anyone has anything related, I'm gonna also talk about the park, the DPW building and that. But if anyone has any questions related to the infrastructure downtown, how about we pause here and I'll be happy to answer any.
What was the date for the furniture downtown again?
I believe we'll have the benches out mid to the end of April for sure because they're on, we have those stored up at DPW, the benches, trash receptacles and recycling receptacles. Uh, the tables that we've ordered will be a few weeks behind that. Um, but I anticipate those uh, by the first week of May, hopefully the last week of April, but that's all delivery time.
Have we got new benches?
All all benches are new. All, everything will be brand new, all matching. We have uh, once um, they're uncrated, we will then uh, purchase uh, cigarette depository, correct, stuff like that. We'll also be uh, purchasing five additional trash receptacles that will be specific for the social district businesses. Because of that, we're required to have a uh, receptacle designated for the social district in front of each business. So, so those will be coming um, three to four weeks after. So. But yeah, all brand new, all black, antique black, I think so.
I don't know whether anybody ever brought this up or not, but a lot of the villages that we went to when, you know, when we were looking at benches and things before, had also um, bowls for dogs.
Not sure if there's any bowls. Those are all items we can add to um, from from the supplier. Uh, there are, and they are installed. Uh, charging stations are at all the bump outs, so there'll be benches um, next to those charging stations.
Oh, great, great.
But but that is a good suggestion.
Should I put that on the list thing?
Certainly.
Okay.
Your choice on if it's a need, want or wish. There there are quite a few people that walk through downtown walking animals, so.
Jim, not a question, just a comment. I think that one-way portion of Main Street is really working well, exceptionally well. And I I know there was concern, the south end of that one-way, there was potential for some conflicts with traffic coming northbound. And that's been alleviated. And it's um, it's working very, very well. Just kudos to.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And really, the um, I've never designed a downtown before, so I don't even wanna attempt to do anything but give credit to the traffic engineers that were involved. And and there is a thought process to to why things were designed and and safer downtown walkability. And again, we're projecting the downtown to be an investment in the fifty to seventy year range, so it's also a predictive analysis of the future, so. And and we all know uh, change uh, brings different reactions from different people, but like I said, actually, it it has been overwhelmingly, the businesses have been very patient and supportive, maybe under in understanding of of this. It's quite quite an immense downtown uh, project, so. Any other questions reference that?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. If you guys are thinking it, others are, so this was the beauty of it.
We talked about planters. I'm sorry, I'm hoarse. We talked about planters.
Yep.
They're gonna be, we have those already?
Yeah, what what the planters will be um, are I'll call them flower pots, but all of them will have uh, their own irrigation system, so it'll all be irrigated to the individual pot. And then within the pots will, the plants will be. So, so like in the curb areas that are awaiting fill dirt, actually, most of those areas will have pots placed in them that we have up at DP, that are brand new as well to match the downtown decor. And within those plant, those pots will be the actual pre-yearnials or annuals or annuals, yes.
I'm very excited.
So, I am. I'm hoping it's all, right now, our, it's a goal. Hopefully, here in the next thirty days, it'll turn into an expectation that I'm confident the downtown and furniture will all be in by May twentieth. I'm also hopeful that the Oswalt Park project will be completed near that same time. Um, definitely by Memorial Weekend, the following weekend, but um, as if you've been downtown, you can see how much has been taken out and it's been lowered to grade to, and you'll see again, that's gonna have a heat source and and the irrigation and prepped all up, but pretty excited to to get this completed so people can use the downtown again and see really what, moving it from uh, paper, if you will, to application, so. Um, Oswalt Park again is, it's, I, we're we're very hopeful and looking like, I will give a plug in. It's uh, Frederick's Construction is overseeing that. I get daily updates from them on on the completion per day and it's just uh, really been nice to have them overseeing these construction projects. The DPW building, just kinda waiting for some ground to thaw, um, to put the flooring in. We do have a pretty um, upgraded stormwater system uh, that's been approved. That that'll also be overseen by Frederick's Construction. The the pole barn is a is a different contractor, but we believe, I fully expect that those will be completed by the end of April, uh, barring any late fall, but it's looking good this week uh, to move that forward. And and we're in budget season. That's what'll bring the conversation in a bit. So we, we've had one Zoom meeting with with one of the organized neighborhoods and we've made offers and we'll schedule um, uh, for citizens to have the opportunity to uh, comment on what their needs, wants and wishes are for the village. Um, some some good ideas came out last year. One of those was a pickleball court, which is moving forward. It's just outside of what we expected the budget to be. Uh, so it'll probably move into the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year where we can apply, it's an additional twenty-eight thousand dollars to to really do it right. It's not gonna be a Cadillac, but we have to add some some concrete to it and the positioning and that, so. Um, but that that's moving forward as well. But really, the Zoom meetings will also be offering that downtown and we'll get into more of that, I guess, under the DDA section. Then I'm open for any questions at all.
Uh, I had one question. Do you know if they're moving or leaving the Centennial, um, uh, what do you call it? They have out there, the Centennial, they're gonna dig up in a hundred years.
Oh, you're you're talking about the Oswalt, the the time capsule?
The time capsule, yes.
Uh, we're not gonna open it. We retrieved it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, interesting enough, it was not where where we, it wasn't under the marker.
Oh, really?
So we prodded around the park and and the contractor found it, but it's stored up in DPW and then all it's gonna be is moved to the north side entrance, like out of the parking lot towards Kelsey. It'll be re-put back in the ground, but it has not been opened. Um, there was, they are gonna wrap it in a tarp or um, there was one section that it wa, I haven't gone up and looked at it. It was described to me as cracked, so they're gonna make sure. So they're gonna make sure that no damage occurred inside and then, but it'll be put, re-put back in the ground. So. It was, it was, not to add to the length of the meeting, Mr. Chairperson, but it was a humorous phone call 'cause they asked, hey, is it the time capsule where the marker was? And I, I assumed so. I wasn't here in seventy-three when they put it in, or seventy-five. But they, but we did find it.
Great. All right. Um, we do not have any official planning commission business. So we're gonna move down to the Downtown Development Authority and, uh, back to the manager, Village Manager Mallory for the finances.
Yeah, finances are, are fine. We, um, did, uh, at the last council meeting, had already been, uh, supported by the DDA Board for, to utilize nine thousand dollars for downtown furniture when we knew we wanted to add these tables. So we made a budget amendment, um, with the council, just on the structure of the budget. But there hasn't been much, much expenditures. Uh, what we're doing now is finalizing and we'll be able to give a presentation at the April meeting, reference the number of businesses that participated in the grant opportunity, um, for the, uh, fire suppression system. So we'll have all, the number who participated, the amount of money supplied by the downtown, uh, uh, Development Authority's funds and, and, um, you know, part of how our recommendations moving into the twenty-two, twenty-three season. But the budget is, is, is fine. Brought in a little bit more revenue than we anticipated, a couple thousand dollars, so. So it's looking good.
All right, we can.
Mr. Mallory, can I just update one thing on the DDA finances?
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to update the board itself. I went over to work with Michelle and with, uh, Mr. Lee. Just to give you an update, I finalized on the Christmas holiday expenses that were taken in and, um, expended. Uh, there is a report that'll be put into the packet. Uh, but again, we took in seventy-one hundred dollars, um, as donations. Uh, we spent fifty-two hundred dollars on the, uh, fund itself. Uh, we had fifteen hundred dollars left over from last year, the, before. So we're still looking at about three thousand dollars that is still in that line item for next year's start. So next year should be a good year.
If I could, a que- a question, Jim.
Sure.
We had money set aside for the facade grant program, or it, it's going to be set aside second or third quarter of this fiscal year. And at one time, we had talked about the potential of grants for improvements to the interior of buildings. Um, if, if our small committee looks at that, um, is, is that open to at least discussion?
Yeah, I had, uh, mentioned in a conversation with the chair, it was our, um, goal to, after tonight, in a full board discussion, um, on ideas that Alex and I would, uh, meet with the four subcommittee members and dive a little bit more deeper into the opportunities downtown and be able to provide you guys with the financial structure and that type of, and then in the April meeting, get more in-depth from your committee at what you'd recommend to the full board. But I, and it's all in finalizing the numbers on how much money is left. And, and at this point, also a conversation from this board because we've, we've talked about, um, just looking at grant opportunities from the DDA and what that could look like in the future. Um, if, you know, the, the, uh, input is, and, and it's all options. So I, I had, my hesitation is, I, I am really wanna listen to, do we wanna look at the number of grants being less with the availability of more money? Do we wanna look at expanding outside of what has traditionally been just a facade? Those type of, of different opportunities. We're also at the council level, which I thought would not take long. It's taken a couple months to get some data on just downtown furniture. If a business wanted to put out chairs in front of their business, um, the council has asked me to provide a report, how, what that process should look like. Um, where we have legal staff looking at, um, the, because it's municipal property, to have liability waivers appropriately signed by businesses if they elect to use. So it's kinda above, a little bit above my pay grade and e- expertise, but, but those are being done right now. So, but it could tailor into that conversation about grant opportunities.
Jim, when we were, um, talking about onings, remember all the onings and stuff we, um, that was one of the things we talked about too, was people being allowed that own shops to have their own chairs and things out. And we developed the paint program at that time. And what we talked about then was that the, um, store owners or business owners would submit what they would like to use with the, um, you know, the weight capacities and things like that. And then we would meet as a committee and with, um, Andrew and look at what they were proposing to make sure that it looked like, you know, it would be something that would withstand.
You were talking on the onings or?
The onings and chairs.
Okay. Yeah, that's what the council asked me to give them a report of what that policy should look like from a village level and, and what that process would be. And, and it's across the board. I sent a, a message out to all municipal leadership asking them, uh, for what they do with inside their boundaries. And I don't, and it's across the board, the response is, some municipalities, I mean, charge per chair put out per month. Um, that's not something I believe I'll be recommending to the council. Um, but, uh, it's just across the board. And then it, it'll go in front of the council and the council, I guess, make a decision on that. But we'll work with the subcommittee. I'm not excluding anyone. I'm nowhere near an expert on this. We're trying to get as much input, what other municipalities do. And then the plan is to talk to our own store owners and get their input.
Other thing, the other thing we did is we picked out several styles of things that, you know, they could select from, that we had investigated, that they could start with. You know, these are the things that we will approve right away.
And that could be an option. Could be, certainly with the furniture that we're purchasing.
Right, right.
And there's a, um, discussion only of a consistent look being downtown. Uh, some of the bordering fences, uh, in Dane I've worked with, 'cause it's gonna impact his area where people can sit out and drink under, he has a different liquor license.
Yeah.
So, so we found a fence that I, I believe I'll be coming back to the DDA and, and council to use DDA money. And then as well as the four areas on Main Street that have a little, uh,
Tables, chairs?
No, the four areas around Liberty Lane East and West that have a s- uh, about a three-inch drop-down.
Oh, yeah.
There's been some concerns raised just to bring, draw people's attention to those areas to make sure they don't miss that, that step, if you will.
Trip and issue.
So we used like the same type of fencing initially is my plan. Um, and then Alex is exploring how we can use that space, maybe to draw people downtown if we can manufacture or find, uh, I, um, trying to think of the right word. But to, to have like art, if you're gonna hang or display it in that area that would bring people downtown, uh, how, how to, uh, yeah, manufacture, find that contraption that would, would hold that art. That's part of what we're exploring with the, the Vicksburg Cultural Arts Center and some other people. But, I, I can tell you, I'm, I'm open to anything. Um, we're not, as a staff, set in any direction other than we should have some standards.
Good. And we wanna jump to the needs, wants, and wishes for the DDA?
Yeah, I've emailed this out, but I also, if you wanted to take a few minutes to, to express some of your ideas as a committee as a whole, and then with, and all four members of the subcommittee are here, um, we, they could use that information as well, basically looking in, and this is specific to downtown. Um, what, uh, the needs, wants, and, and wishes. I also supplied, um, kind of a historical document we've used the past few years of items that have been purchased and also from, um, as it impacted the budget. So you have that document as well. But it's this committee's choice. If you wanna do that tonight, if you wanna take it home and report back. Um, but between now and April, I'll be reaching out to set a, a more, a meeting with the subcommittee to have a discussion so we can prep the budget.
Chair Shankle, if I may? I appreciate everything the subcommittee has done and has done in the past. I guess my opinion would be to ask them to convene in the, over the next month and look at expanding the DDA grants, 'cause then that might impact our needs, wants, and wishes at that point. So if they are amendable, um, I would express interest in coming back in April with more of a finalized needs, wants, and wishes after we can get a nice handle from the subcommittee on what their thoughts are. And to get to, uh, show appreciation for the subcommittee and what they've done in the past too, so.
Open discussion, right? Yeah, we don't, we don't. I, I, I'm kinda curious. I'd like to hear just kind of thoughts from the group. Um, you've got some time. I'd appreciate kinda opening up and hearing what people's thoughts are on this. This is a, a time to be creative, to be innovative. So I, I'd appreciate hearing from the rest of the, the planning commission, any thoughts on kinda where you're at right now with it?
Go ahead. Go ahead and start off there.
There, we had, um, a public meeting back in two thousand nineteen. This is old stuff, obviously. But it was comments from the community and we hung the posters on the wall. We had about eighteen, twenty things, what, what is great about Vicksburg and then what needs fixing. And, um, a lot of those things that were brought up were fixed, the railroad crossing on the west side of town. We're getting a bakery. Uh, the, um, the, the problems, concerns with, uh, the sidewalks on Main Street, which way it's gonna be going one way. But there were some other things, uh, uh, concerning perhaps, um, dog waste stations, uh, maybe bowls or something like that, uh, associated with that. Um, there was also some areas about getting businesses into town. Can we, can we encourage businesses to come to Vicksburg? And how would we induce them to do that? Um, through some type of a grant to get them up and running. Uh, there was proposals or thoughts about, um, a newsletter, uh, more electronic communication, more involvement of, um, I guess us as a planning commission or the village commission or the, the, um, village manager and his staff about, uh, the recruiting of, uh, of more people to serve on committees, more volunteers and so on. Uh, I have that list. I, I gave it to Jim. I wasn't, uh, but I'll, I'll research that. And for the April meeting, I'll bring, bring some of those items up. But, thank you.
And I can scan this in tomorrow morning and email it. Um, it was a DDA exercise from, uh, two thousand and nineteen. On a, on a couple items that I heard, and that's why I like the conversation, it props my memory. There will be dog waste stations, um, in, in the downtown when we put all of this out. And Alex has spearheaded as well. And we, last Thursday, went, uh, to see a demo of an electronic sign that we're looking at. It's all internet-based and so we're gonna consult with the people who have our internet downtown if this will work. But to be put in the Liberty Lane East and West area that would have community events scrolling through that electric sign there on Main Street. So that is in the works as well. We're trying to first, the finances, and hopefully they don't watch on YouTube. But we believe w- it will be within budget. Right now, what we're looking at, we wanna make sure it works though with the internet we have established downtown. So, so those are two items you mentioned that, that are definitely in the works, the dog stations and the electronic sign.
Um, to report what I feel, uh, uh, I had it all in my head what I was gonna say too. Um, when I, we came, I came to this town about ten years ago, joined the DDA about nine years ago. We started working on the grant programs and such back then. Um, about eight, I would have to say at least eighty to eighty-five percent of the blight problems that were in this town through the grant program have been eliminated. The holes in the buildings, the deteriorated walls and things in the decrepit buildings have, have turned around, which brings it, people want to come down to the, to the village. Um, so that's been a great program for that. Uh, a lot of the needs that we discussed in the last five years have been taken care of with the new infrastructure program that went through. Um, a lot of the wants, um, we still need to work on. Um, some of the wants that were real brought up were, uh, when you walk, go into other municipalities, um, when you come into town, there are wayfind signages on the main corners that tell you which way your businesses are. We've sent some, um, photographs in the past of other places that are, are signage of wayfind signage of what, what's down this street, what's down that street, where, where is this at? So when you do come into town, you know, and it's, it's a nice, um, uh, setup. Um, as far as the other needs and things, we do need some new umbrellas for the Liberty Lane, uh, East. Um, those umbrellas that are up there, they were not the best ones we bought. We just, we bought some and they lasted about two years. So those are a few things that we need to do or on that, so.
Yeah, those are all good points and memories. On the umbrellas, um, we've ordered umbrellas for those eight tables. And, um, I'll confirm, but I believe, so they all color matched. They've been ordered for the ones that were already in Liberty Lane, new ones. But I'll confirm that with you in follow-up.
Jim, is there downtown internet, public internet?
Yeah, there's free internet through the downtown. It was, uh, both off the water tower, Kalamazoo, Main Street, and Prairie Street. In Oswalt Park should ha- have good, solid, free internet.
Tim, can you remind me, I know we've had a lot of conversation about that parking lot behind distant whistle. What's the, did we ever land on a resurfacing plan for that?
Yeah, it's, it's in the capital improvement plan. I think the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year by priorities of the council. Uh, they're right now have engaged in a company to do a multi-pronged analysis for the needs of a village hall. Whether completely new, whether existing property and/or building exists in the municipal limit. So that's a priority. So that's a priority first. But, uh, as we laid out the available money, we, we have assigned money both from the DDA each year and predominantly from village funds. And we're anticipating that cost to be about three quarters of a million dollars. So, and, and we're, so we're saving the cash and it's anticipated either the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year or twenty-seven, twenty-eight fiscal year to, to have the cash in hand to completely redo the lot, to redo that parking lot.
John and to the other subcommittees, um, I guess I'd ask you guys to explore, if you don't mind, in the next month. I did note one business downtown has a roll-up door to access the public sidewalk now. If that could be looked into for a grant, not obviously for a full construction cost, but a grant assistance for any businesses that may want to install some kind of access to the sidewalk, such as a great breakfast or lunch place down on Main Street that would, uh, like to expand options and create more of an outdoor atmosphere. So that would be something I'd, I guess, would like the, uh, subcommittee to look into further if that's a possibility in, um, that grant expansion.
The new one that was installed, um, he did apply for, or he did submit in, information for that, but we canceled the, or we, um, didn't cancel it. We suspended the grant program to this year, um, but to looking into expanding it to this year. I have heard a few other places that want to do something like that to open up to the more social district area. I'm assuming that's what it's for. As far as restaurants and things like that, I've, personally, I feel that there's a very big, uh, health problem with your food. And I think what they have to, I, I'm not, you can't quote me on this, but their bill, the, the existing one that's put in, that is separated from their restaurant. So I think they cover the guidelines through the health department that way because the door, I, I, I don't know, but, um, to have an open building, you know, we're not in Florida. Everything is open. And you could, I don't know if you can back me up on that or.
I, I don't know anything to the, those, but then what I would comment, and you can correct me if I'm in error. I'm more speaking, I, I believe we communicated to the business owner that, and that would probably come from this subcommittee as one of those options, that kind of the after the fact, that could be submitted for reimbursement of, of some sort at, at a, at a, you know, a level that we've done in the past, as well as the other business that's looking at that, has specifically, um, you know, when is that grant process going to be available? So that was one of the conversations we are going to have with the subcommittee is to say, hey, if that activity is available, let's communicate that to the business owners and so they can start the construction and, and get it up and going for the summer as well.
One, one thing that we said when we did the facade grants was that each, each building had a front and a rear facade, and they could use the facade grant for either the front or the rear or both. So.
The multiple times that's been done.
And to Jim's comment on that, I think I'm, I'm almost positive in the past where someone has fit the criteria of the grant program and we've awarded it to them. So, but it's up to this committee to observe or to go over that, um, grant request and then carry it on from there.
I'd be curious from Mr. Lee, um, if there's any opportunities that he's aware of from networking and canvassing our downtown business owners. Are there any barriers that we need to overcome? Are there any challenges for new businesses to enter into our, our market? Even Mr. DeBolt, I appreciate your, your comments on that too. I'm, I'm just kind of curious, what is, how has COVID affected this landscape? And what are our new areas of opportunity for businesses coming in?
As far as what I know, you know, we've done brainstorming as far as what, what do we need in this town? What, what don't we have in this town that people have to go out of town to get? And can they compete with the other places outside of town? With the gas prices now, yeah, you can stay in town and buy stuff. But, uh, and that's lots of things like, uh, I know we had a, we had a car wash at one, our car wash place at one time. Well, we, we made a park out of that, which is a beautiful park, you know, they had to start that. There are no, um, well, it's, there's a few gift shops in town now, but, um, but as far as floral shops, there's really one floral shop now. Uh, we have no sporting goods, things in this town, um, as far as a bait shop or, you know, you go to the shell station and get them as far as that. There's a, open build, there's a few open buildings that can be recruited to bring that into town.
I think one, one exciting bit of news from, from my perspective as a village manager is the, uh, recent organization of the chamber, uh, with, uh, a completely new board that just was voted in last month. We are going to make an announcement Monday night, uh, at, next Monday at the council meeting. Going to have an event that's sponsored by the Lions, the Rotary and the Chamber. Kind of a state of the village event, um, in May. So I think having the chamber with that, uh, new sense of passion to, to have that arm of outreach. Alex and I met through the open, opening that. We, we, we know, um, Clarence from the city of Kalamazoo, uh, Chamber of Commerce, um, but he came down for the opening of Kelsey Credit Union and offered to give assistance to, to the local chamber and resources. We've had very encouraging conversations with Southwest Michigan First and Upjohn Institute, um, and looking forward to some announcements in the future. I think you'll see, uh, retail space temporarily go, go in on Prairie Street here in the next thirty days that we'll announce soon. And, uh, I believe its permanent location will be in the Maine and Washington area. So I think it's staying positive about Vicksburg and, and, and seeing this play out and letting the free markets society process also play out. We're open for business and, and certainly have our cell phones on our business cards for any developer or investor that wants to look at Vicksburg.
Any, any further discussion on needs, wants or wishes from this group?
You're, you're a fresh idea, so we need to hear those ideas.
You covered it. You covered it pretty well, I think.
I have a list. There's the, like John said, the blight issues, there are a lot that have been fixed and corrected. We still have a couple that we need to take care of. And I'm wondering about being able to enforce what we can do.
Yeah, we've contacted the city of, of Port Huron, who has a local ordinance on, um, non-use buildings, buildings that aren't in use. And how, we have data that demonstrate those type of buildings cost more for a municipality to, uh, be aware of. So, so we're looking at the, that as an option in the future, which is an additional fee associated with a building that's not being used. But certainly going to address, uh, buildings that don't meet standards and up to code and would not be, um, able to place a business inside of it. They're, they're all on the radar and.
Cool. And we talked about signage. I, you know, I'm sorry, I've got anesthesia brain a little bit. Are the parking signs up yet? For where the parking lots are? Okay. That was my question about that. I haven't been driving. And then I've been talking to Jackie Coney about this a little bit. Some towns, like where my mother and daddy live in Hendersonville in North Carolina, they have bears. And they have, it's called barefooting art walk and auction. And in their downtown, they have these big bears that they buy every year. Their DDA buys the big bears. And an artist takes the bear or a, it can even be a business that takes the bear and they paint the bear any way they want to, as long as it's not lewd or crude. And then they're put on display Memorial Weekend and they're on display all through the summer. And then at the end of the summer, they have an auction. And, and the bear, if it's three thousand dollars or under for the bear, uh, the, each bear picks, um, a nonprofit that they want part of the proceeds to go to. And, and up to fifteen hundred dollars is given to the nonprofit. If it's over three thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars goes back to the DDA and the rest over the three thousand dollars plus the fifteen hundred goes to the nonprofit. So I was talking to, to Jackie about that because we were talking about art installations and things. Well, Hendersonville raised a hundred thousand dollars on their bears last year. And we talked about, and I, Jim, I think we talked about this a while back, about what could we do? And we're the Bulldogs. So I've been looking at big Bulldogs that, you know, I think that would be a fun thing. People are going and they have selfies taken with these bears. And then there's another town that does cows and there's another one that does pigs. And I think it would be a really fun thing to do. I think it would draw people downtown to, to see the Bulldogs. And I don't know, you could, they're really cool. Another thing that I thought would be great is, and we talked about this before, is a splash pad area somewhere. Even I thought maybe in the back of the parking lot behind the, the laundromat. Way back in that corner might even be a possible location for it. If not at Clark Park, um, we have two grandsons and their favorite thing to do in the summer is go to the, the splash pad. And you know, they can't get there by themselves. Their parents have to take them. So we've got coffee shops and stuff that parents can go to, get something to eat or drink and then go sit at the splash, splash pad while their, their kids are playing. Another thing is, and this could be in the back park, and I've been thinking about this for ten years, sorry. This could be in the back parking lot. If we had even slightly raised, like maybe right behind Fred's or somewhere, uh, a platform that a small band could fit and have electricity for it for Friday nights or Saturday nights for, you know, come out and hang out downtown for music. You got something about that?
I, I do know that part of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year will be, um, an update, um, a, a comprehensive redo and update to the Vicksburg master plan. From there, it will quickly move into a Parks and Rec plan. And I believe it's the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. We're looking at a makeover for, uh, Clark Park, which discussions have been that kind of, um, platform cover area.
Like a band show?
Correct.
Cool. And then another thing, there's a couple of towns that we've been to. They have one of those big blow-up movie screens. And on, um, I think it's the second Saturday night. Here Silver Beach, Silver Beach. They have it. And I think it's the second Saturday night of the month, they have free movie night. And families come and they have popcorn guy there selling popcorn and, and then, and the whole area just comes and watches a movie. We could do that in the parking lot or at Clark Park.
The Parks and Rec Committee and Chad Kissinger is heading this up, um, looking at that as an option. They run into some interesting things, but he is, uh, and he is now the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Committee.
What's his name?
Chad Kissinger, and I'll make sure you have his contact information.
Okay. And then I.
He's looking into that as well.
Cool. And then I have one more thing. I was looking at, since this is the, the, um, hundred and fifty year this year, I was looking at some of the old pictures of downtown and the old map. And I thought it would be cool if we had money in the DDA budget somewhere to just, you know, those little black plaques that have like brass on them? And put the name of what the building originally was and what year it was built. That, that would be a good thing to do for the historic thing that we're doing this year.
Are you talking about attaching to the buildings downtown? There's been multiple buildings that we've put plaques on, um, but they're not on each.
Right. And the ones that don't have anything, if we could put like.
I know one thing we did, you might've been involved in it, was, I'll call it, uh, put together some press boards that could be displayed in each of the buildings. So when people walked to the building, they could see what the historical was held in the building. So I do know those were made.
Yeah. It was just a thought.
Great, thank you. Well, I think that gives me better perspective, kind of going into my own planning here. So looking forward to seeing what the DDA committee comes to the next meeting with and some recommendations, um, for this. And just always a, uh, exciting time of the year to think of, dream big and, and think about what we can do to improve our village even more, so. Any other comments on that before we move on? Okay, we will move on to our member comments. Anyone have any more comments they'd like to share?
Bu- before that, if I could, uh, because we, some people were on YouTube and the, the streaming on YouTube went down, it's back now. But we certainly want citizens that were watching that to understand the internet service within our building that we're at. Uh, had a glitch or down for a moment and we went up to back up hotspots. And that's why you might've seen me walk over to the computer to get that Zoom running again. But that's what occurred, if there was interruptions, was the internet service within the building. Uh, the system does back up all the recordings. So Alex will take a look and make sure that the full meeting is what is on YouTube tomorrow. But anyone who was watching certainly apologize, it was outside of our control and we tried to react as quick as we could to make sure we got it back up.
This is member Wortella. I have, um, one comment. With our hundred and fiftieth, our hundred and fifty-first year anniversary coming up, um, the Vicksburg Historical Society would really love to be an active part of that celebration. And we'd want to do it in conjunction with, um, the village to work in a partnership. And I see that Mr. Lee is in charge of events. So, uh, whoever we could work with to make, um, our, our resources available, our volunteers available, to work with the village would be most happy to do that. And as far as your comment, uh, we have probably ten thousand pictures in our archives. And, um, they could, uh, be reproduced. I don't know how, we could work out some type of, of funding to take care of that. But they are available for loan or if they want to be reproduced and put up permanently, that would, that could be arranged. Thank you.
I'll just share, uh, uh, thank you and congratulate. I'll just share, thank you and congratulations to the team on the food truck rally this week. It was a frigid night, what was it, Tuesday or Thursday night? And it was, it was a great event, though. It's, it's so nice to see people come out and walking around downtown. It really gives me an idea of the possibilities of what downtown can be and kind of event center it can be. And when I hear stage and, you know, all those things, it gets me really excited about it. So congratulations, Mr. Lee. I think you knocked it out of the park on that one. So appreciate you organizing that. And I, I think I heard from all the downtown business owners that were open at that time that they certainly appreciate the influx of over three hundred people, right? Yeah, it was a good night. So thank you. Very much appreciated. All right, not hearing any other comments here. Time is eight oh three for Secretary DeBolt. And we will adjourn this meeting. Thanks.